All right, we'll call the county mayor board commissioner's order with a moment of silent meditation, please. All right, so we have flagrant leagists. Flagrant leagists.
All right, from the United States of America, the ten of the public, the which is stand, one nation, one God, and the Lord who will live and death for.
For.
That was a. They're talking to them. All right, the mayors, gals coming up in the. Men, come have a motion. A move to adopt the. Oh, that's right, we got a roll call, I'm sorry, I ain't used to this stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and for the public, we will go ahead and take a roll call to show that we've established a forum, and then we'll go into that, the agenda to require our vote, so if it's all right, I'll go ahead and for the town clerk, we'll go ahead and do roll call, um, 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 we'll start with Mayor Owens.
Here.
Mayor Protem Selby.
Yeah.
Commissioner Mann.
Here.
Commissioner Borland.
Here.
Commissioner Burke.
Here.
Commissioner Collins. And Commissioner Walker.
Here.
All right, uh, Mr. Mayor, you have, this is the board of the board present, um, and, uh, and therefore a forum. I understand the next item is the adoption of the agenda as presented or amended, this is an item for action, sir.
All right, yeah, we have a consent agenda.
Uh, it's Eddie Mann, I make a motion, will you adopt the agenda as presented?
This is a second.
Jason Borland, a second.
All right, um, the most, by any man, seconded by Jason, here is the consent agenda. One try.
Thank you, sir, I'll go ahead and do the roll call for the vote, um, Mayor Protem Selby, IRNA. Commissioner Mann, IRNA.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, IRNA.
Aye.
Commissioner Burke, IRNA.
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, IRNA.
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, IRNA.
Aye.
Mayor, you have a unanimous vote for adoption of the agenda as presented. Would like to be run to item number four, sir? Yes, sir, uh, for the public, item number four is a consent agenda, this is two items, the two will limit it to the June 3rd, 2020 regular meeting, and item four B, the approval of minutes from the June 17th, 2020 recess workshop, this item is for action.
All right, we got a motion, right?
Yes, sir.
I'm moving to further, uh, said, in the, no, you said workshop.
All right.
Minutes.
This is a second.
Right.
Who's that? Yes, all right, motion by Ben, second by Eric, we move the consent agenda, hey, there, uh, go ahead.
Yes, sir, thank you, um, in terms of the roll call vote, first up, Mayor Protem Selby, IRNA.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, IRNA.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, IRNA.
Aye.
We'll go to our phone-in callers, Commissioner Burke, IRNA.
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, IRNA.
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, IRNA.
Aye.
All right, Mr. Mayor, you have a unanimous vote to approve the consent agenda unanimously.
Yes.
Uh, next up on the agenda, sir, this is under the category number five, it's presentation, this is on the promotion of the local economy by the town of Manio, this item is for information, if it's all right with you, Mr. Mayor, I'll have a introduction to this and then here's some information online as well. Thank you, sir. Local governments are allowed to perform economic development in order to attract or retain businesses, which in turn helps the local tax base. However, I look at economic development at a more personal level, each local business produces jobs for our residents, plus having thriving businesses contributes to community vibrancy, which can be enjoyed by all community members. Even before COVID-19 hit the local economy, the town was already working on ideas and programs designed to assist local businesses, including the DAC initiative that is our pathway to the Main Street America program, as well as the proposed Manio Business Association. However, we can't wait for the State Department of Commerce to help us with our strategic planning and program implementation, we need to act now to help businesses. Town has been consulting with local businesses and nonprofits, along with experts referred to us by business leaders, and we are taking critical steps to support businesses, for example, you've already heard how we are helping to start the Manio Business Association, including free dues for a year and marketing support, starting tonight, we are rolling out a range of promotional activities. Radio ads will start tomorrow morning to draw people to Manio, plus we have advertising going out on social media as well. We are also working with the Outer Banks Visitors Bureau to do cooperative marketing, including online ads and email blasts, with Manio as a featured destination, we even have print media going out with town buying a two-page spread from One Boat for Outer Banks this week. Of course, with all these ads sending people to Manio, we need to have a place for visitors to land online. So I am pleased to present to you tonight with a new website and social media channels under the brand of Discover Manio. If you go to discovermanio.com, you will see the town staff has developed in-house a brand-new website for visitors to explore the businesses and attractions in our town, staff has developed the site, content, videos, and much more. Let me take you on a quick tour.
So for our view, for our folks who are listening in the public, if you go to your computer, you can go right now to discovermanio.com. And what I'm showing here, starting with the home, starting with the homepage, discovermanio.com, we have a great picture of the town, we've got a logo, we have, but we have all these different categories, where to stay, where to eat and drink, where to shop, things to do, weddings and events, and as we go through here, it's not just about pictures, though, we have entire categories of content here, so if you click on where to stay, for example, you will, you will see in basically an alphabetical order, all of the things we have here, here from waterfront inns, to a delightful bed and breakfast, to affordable motels, and much more. And in each case, what we've done is make sure to share the photos that are showing in the presence for these different entities, and they also have content coming straight from their, from their websites, so we'll can, we will actually engage with each of the businesses if they want to update their pictures, or do new special messaging, and have, give everybody, make sure they have the opportunity here to, uh, to get the, get the opportunity for this free advertising. We also, I'm gonna go back to the homepage for a second, because a couple of things I'd like to point out, not just those categories and the pictures, we also have social media feeds, so we'll also have our own dedicated channels for Discover, Discover Manio. So our visitors, depending on their interests, their age range and demographics, some may choose Facebook, some may choose Instagram, some may use Pinterest, um, there's so many ways for us to, to connect with folks, um, we also have places for special messages, so some places have, uh, and of course, there's, there are requirements with COVID-19, so we have a little link there where people can click on that if they want to find out what the local requirements are, especially if they're coming from out of town. And even after we get through all these different categories, I'll briefly show you each of them as we go through, but we've all, staff has also started this whole series, it's called Bring Your Series, bring you, in this case, a Bring Your Sense of Adventure. So you can bring your sense of adventure, bring your appetite, whatever it might be, bring your curiosity, there are different videos. So a quick, a quick hitting series like this can help us with ads, thirty seconds to a minute and a half in length, town staff in conjunction with colleagues over at Dare County are helping to produce these types of things which can draw people in, so whether it's drawing them into restaurants, drawing them into activities, whatever it might be, some people are very visual, they wanna see these things, so we'll have a series of that, of course, sometimes people wanna just see what's live, and we know that one of the top spots on our website is going up to webcam, so people love this very, very hot topic to come out and see either, not just videos, but even our webcam, so we, whether it's the marina, or whether it's just Queen Elizabeth Avenue, people like to look at our live feed, and there are people walking downtown, and cars going, a few raindrops are going around right now, apparently as well, but this is one of the hottest spots on our other website, so we think people will want to see what's going on in the marina, what's going on, even things like the Manio Minutes, so they can get up-to-date information, but in a fun and whimsical way. So as we come back, that's, those are the, those are the video, those are some of the videos, and things are showing them. Also, in addition to videos and webcams, sometimes folks, when they're traveling, they wanna find out about weather, what's the temperature, what's the, what's the projected weather while I'm here, so we've got a weather feed going on as well. And of course, a calendar, now I know in the current environment, some of the special events have been canceled, but there are things, there are things going on, like the sailing, the sailing camp is going on, they're able to accomplish that with good disinfecting and social distancing, and it's fully subscribed next week, so of our other partner attractions have other things going on, so in this case, fun with frogs, and whatever it might be, but we continue to work with local attractions to see, to put on here what, what they, what they're ready to produce, and even little things, like how to contact us, we have a ways to, for people to contact these, either by phone, uh, by, by P.O. box, drop us by, put line by email, and even maps on the site as well, so we're trying to get as much information to visitors, the ones who are out there trying, either, either trying to plan their trip in advance, or once they're here, let's capture them, so whether a destination or a day trip, we're trying to get them in many different ways, but also do it in kind of a picturesque manner here. So we mentioned where to stay, where to eat and drink, well, eat and drink, we have so many options, it was fantastic, we had to have to break it up into categories, from restaurants, bars, pubs, and distilleries, coffee, tea, and sweets, so going through the different categories, it was actually a lot of fun to see exactly how much we have on offer here, I mean, from fine dining to some fast bites, there's a little bit of something for everybody here, and if you keep scrolling and scrolling, you actually get to see and see pictures that might whet your appetite, and then of course, the map, you can actually, users actually see on that, that's what I wanna go to, they click on it, and then, and then get directions straight to that particular location, so, again, trying to get a format here that's useful for folks visiting town who may not know where to go, but boy, we've got some things for them to do. Shopping is the same way here, um, there are a lot of different places to shop, um, and things like, some of, I know some of the things are obvious, certain kind of shops, whether it be Bluegrass Trading, or Downtown Books, or Sam &amp; Winston, there are a number of different shops and things here as well, but some of the things are a little bit less obvious, like ship, we got a couple of different ship stores, many of our visitors actually come in by boat, and we are, we are linking in with our reservation system, so boaters come in, they wanna know, is there a ship store, is there a hardware store, is there a grocery store, and things like that, so we wanna make sure we accommodate all those, and you see, I'm scrolling and scrolling, we've got, we've got so many great shops, too, so we have, uh, that's, that was just one of the categories on the where to shop, because for example, well, we also have specialty services, everything from, from barbers to, uh, to salons, a massage therapist, things like that, sometimes there are specialty services, and sometimes there are shops, the other goods and services, Ace Hardware is where many of the boaters go, and, uh, whether it be convenience stores, or vehicle sales or repair, there's a number of different options for them, and grocery stores as well, so depending on what they're, what they're doing here, they've got, we've got different places for them to see where to shop and where to get things. And of course, things to do, that's, the things to do is also a lot of fun, that was so big, we had to break it into categories. So activities, I think, some of the things, we, whether it be, whether it be sunset tours, dolphin tours, going out on, you know, going out with kite, buying a kite, or doing stand-up paddleboard, or kayaking, it can all be done here, and we're, and we're doing, we're doing a wide range of things, from, um, you know, everything from ghost, ghost tours, to gym, to sailing, we also wanted to make sure that this bicycling and cycling and walking map, Manio is very walkable, and very cycle, um, even at the last meeting, the mayor was pointing out how many people bring in the cycles, so we wanna make sure that they get, they get a map that they can actually just print, print themselves, uh, download it, download and print the, print the map, all they have to do is hit download, and they can print it home, or we can have copies for them here, so a good way to help some of our visitors who are maybe not going by four-wheel, but in this case, two-wheel transportation. All right, so, but in addition to those kind of things to do, we, we also, of course, we've got arts and theater, we have some, some, you know, everything from the Arts Council to galleries, we, and we understand, and we understand that, for example, right now, it's Lost Colony, for example, this season, so we still wanna make sure we represent these organizations, and have the opportunity to have, to show that, cause hopefully next season they'll be back, and make sure we keep their presence known, um, and of course, we got attractions, we've been keeping in close touch with, with various, various folks here, whether it be Rotacottan Festival Park, or that hidden gem, the Outer Banks History Center, you know, we're showing things from Fort Raleigh to Island Farm, the aquarium, the History Center, of course, our own Maritime Museum, the Pea Island Cookhouse Museum, we wanna make sure we feature all these types of attractions, whether they're in town, or whether they're nearby in part of greater Manio, so we've been in touch with these, as they're, some of them are opening in limited capacity, um, some of them are fully open, um, but we wanna make sure as things change, that people can see exactly what they can do in terms of those attractions, because it's not just about the businesses, the attractions should work hand in hand. And last category we had here, actually found out, first it started out as weddings, but really wedding, special events, people come here for family reunions, or corporate events, things like that, so when you talk about venues, you know, wedding and event venues, it doesn't have to be a wedding, it can be, it can be all sorts of things, um, and sometimes you'll, one thing you'll notice here is some people are also in different categories, so for example, if you look at Avenue, Avenue Waterfront Grill, they're both a restaurant, but they can potentially either be a venue or do catering. Um, we also have the same thing with some of our B&amp;Bs, um, I know, and in just up the road, where you can stay there, but you can also have a wedding, it's, like, right now, they even have yoga classes down there, so, uh, some of these venues are just so beautiful, they can have multiple uses. And in addition to not just the venues, but accommodations, the lodging where folks can stay, catering, and those types of things, uh, everything from photographers, and even other event services, because we've got some folks, whether they're providing flowers, or officiants, or whatever it might be, there are a number of different services that could help these special events, so I don't wanna spend too much time going over everything, what I wanna do is give you taste for the categories, for the content, and the kind of things, and we wanted to make sure that when folks, when folks hear the ads about Manio, we give them something to look at, something to, you know, aspire to in their vacation, and fun for a little bit of everybody.
Now, I acknowledge the future Manio Business Association may choose to do a bigger website when it gets underway, but I am very proud of what staff has accomplished in getting this project underway so quickly, thank you. I offer my sincere congratulations to IT Department Head Carl Woody and Program Manager Michelle Bunce for taking on this challenging assignment, and producing a professional yet fun website for the visitors we want to draw to Manio. We are hopeful that local businesses will see this free advertising and support services as confirmation that this town cares about the businesses, it appreciates the jobs they create, and it supports the greater Manio community.
Is that, is, now, let me ask, is it, is it going live now?
Yes, sir, this site is officially live now, the radio ads will start, and social media ads will start in the morning, and we'll make sure to get the promotion of it going right away, but I wanted this board to see first, as we're ready to release.
I think we just should give, uh, IT and Michelle a hand, Carl.
And evidently, it was your brainstorm.
That's right.
It's good, indeed, a long time.
Yeah.
Very kind, thank you, thank you so much, well, if it's all right, Mr., if, let's turn your. Sounds like we made a question, sir?
Yeah, uh, this is Christine Walker, I have a couple of questions, Shane, the website looks really nice, um, uh, how does this compare to that Manio Life Facebook page and Instagram page that we had going?
And thank, and thank.
Do we still have?
Thank you so much, Commissioner, for pointing that out, because we have different channels for different needs, so the target audience for this website, discovermanio.com, are the visitors and people who, we want to either introduce to Manio, or to tell them more about what you can do here, so this is intended for, for visitors, whether near or far, uh, day trippers or destination visitors. Now, Manio Life, Manio Life was stood up in basically a week's time to support primarily the local community, this was for residents, businesses, and nonprofits to learn about resources available to them, whether it be utility relief, whether it be support from the state or the county, trying to get resources, and we were also trying to tell stories during this COVID-19 situation, where they could hear about, um, meals being provided by the school district, or a nonprofit that was, that was doing a, uh, doing a grocery program, things like that, so that target was more toward the local community and local resources, Manio Life, Discover Manio, to those folks who have yet to discover all what Manio has to offer.
Okay, um, and do we have, um, our new website, is that all complete and up?
Uh, yes, yes, Commissioner, the, the new, the new town website, our .gov domain, uh, as you, as you can tell from our ending, the discovermanio.com, that's intended to be focused on businesses, because a .gov or government website isn't really intended to promote like individual businesses and things like that, so that's why we had to separate it like so many other towns do. For, but the town's .gov website, uh, we had previously reported that that, uh, that website is nearing completion, uh, the, the final transfer of content in QAQC is underway, and we, we had projected to have that launched by the end, end of July, so you'll, you'll see that in the next thirty days, so it's pretty impressive to have, uh, an IT Department Head, Program Manager, and, so, and, and support staff from departments to stand up Manio Life, discovermanio.com, and a brand-new, and a brand-new manionc.gov website, really over the course of just a couple of months.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't too much and too confusing, and, you know, I knew, you know, we've been working on our own website for like three or four possibly longer years to get that up and going, I just wanna make sure that, um, you know, we're not taking on too much that's gonna get lost. Um, and the Business Association, the, the Town Business Association, is that, um, I mean, are they, as far as, I mean, that's, that's a business association, right, we're just, you're just helping to facilitate that?
Yes, Commissioner, that's correct, so the Manio Business Association, we're helping to facilitate this early on, that would've been one of the early goals of the, of the DAC program, is to organize that community, but we felt it couldn't wait to start bringing people together, especially in the current environment, so the, the MBA or Manio Business Association program will move forward, uh, we're trying to get a meeting set up here in July, to, to continue that discussion and move through strategic planning, and this is exactly the kind of asset, discovermanio.com, uh, this is the kind of asset that would be turned over to that group for long-term maintenance, updating, and things like that, so, uh, but we want, we're hoping. Good start.
Okay, all right, let's.
Ask you, if this was something I was gonna be handed off as well with, uh, to the MBA once it's up and going, but I think this is, I mean, in a, in a climate where all the businesses and the folks who work for them have kind of been brought to their knees, and, and we don't really know when, you know, we can emerge from that fully, uh, this is something exciting to, um, show us what it looks like going forward, um, so thank you guys again, also, because, um, this is, this is gonna be great, I think. Um, the radio ads, are those running locally, are those in some of our top visiting markets, or?
Yes, yes, Commissioner, actually, those, those ads are starting tomorrow morning, we didn't wanna get the ad ahead of the, the site being launched tonight, um, but the ads are starting tomorrow morning, they're going both on local stations, as well as streaming by iHeartRadio and some others in many of our feeder markets, uh, which would range from Virginia, North Carolina, and elsewhere.
James, what, um, I mean, for the radio ads, are we paying for the spots for those, what, what, what budget is this, is this out of the IT department? Or is this?
Uh, no, Commissioner, this is coming out, this, this is coming out of the new department, Community and Economic Development, and when we, when we talk, we talked with the board before about using, transferring some of the money that wouldn't be spent on special events, but use it to help support the business community, that's exactly the funding we were talking about, um, the good news is, with the media company, we're not only having some spots and, and placements that we pay for, they're also supplementing it with PSAs and some shorter ads, uh, separate from our thirty-second spots.
Okay.
Uh, this, Commissioner Collins, uh, once a person goes to our town website, will they be able to link up with this website?
Uh, yes, Commissioner, it, we do have the possibility to link, but I wanna be very, very careful here, one of the things we, we try to do is separate the .gov, the government domain, um, from, from the, um, from the, from the .com, because eventually, again, this will be turned over to the Merchants Association, so just like you wouldn't see a link between a company, a direct link between a town or city and its Chamber of Commerce, but you will see cross-promotion, so one of the things we can do is cross-promote this, help get the brand out there, help get, you know, help drive traffic to it, and in fact, we've been getting some calls recently from folks visiting who call the front desk, or who email us and say, well, what's there to do in Manio, and I had to bite my tongue when that came in yesterday, say, can you wait twenty-four hours, um, but we're, we absolutely will be able to utilize this site for the folks who call the town, email the town, et cetera, so we're, we're real excited about that possibility as well.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Move on, James.
Thank you, sir, item number six on the agenda, public comment, this is for information, I'll go ahead and read the instructions for our listening audience. Members of the public are invited to address the Board of Commissioners on any topic, public comment is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions, or to take any action on items brought up during the public comment period. Speakers will address all the comments to the board as a whole, and not one individual commissioner. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed, time limits are three minutes per person, or five minutes per group. Please identify yourself and your location, so that your statements can be recorded. So, Mr. Mayor, what I'll do is I'll look on the screen up there and see if we have anybody raising their hand, and for members of the audience, that, to raise your hand and be recognized, if you hit star nine on your phone, it will show up on the control panel here, run by IT Head Carl Woody, so I'll turn around and take a look, and see if we have anybody raising their hand, to do so, hit star nine, if you'd like to make a public comment. Okay, we have one attendee, uh, we have, well, we have eleven attendees, uh, here tonight, and we have one attendee raising the hand, and the last four digits of the phone number are four, nine, six, three, so, um, caller from four, uh, with last four, four, nine, six, three, you are now unmuted, and if you'd like to proceed with your public, identify yourself and your location, and you're welcome to join in.
Hi, thank you very much, uh, this is Todd Quasold at two-two-one Compton, um, first of all, I would just like to thank, uh, the town staff and the commissioners for the expedient work you guys have done in helping the downtown businesses, um, especially putting the picnic tables out, uh, and I just looked at the website online, and it looks fantastic, so I appreciate that, uh, the reason why I was calling tonight is to express my desire to hopefully, uh, see the commission, um, explore the possibility of allowing the boat lifts, and the choice of allowing boat lifts to be left to the individual marinas, which would include Marsh's Light, um, Shallow Bag Bay, and also Pirate's Cove. No one that I've ever talked to would make the notion to have any type of boat lift along the historic waterfront, or anywhere else besides inside the marina, the Marsh's Light Marina is basically useless, um, with any type of east or northeast wind, because the boats just get damaged or destroyed, and I just ask, as a boater, that you guys would consider making amendment to the zoning that would allow the homeowners within Marsh's Light, and also Shallow Bag Bay and Pirate's Cove, if they desire, to have the choice to put boat lifts in, I think it would be great, and, uh, I think it would help stimulate the marina in Marsh's Light, of course, because right now, we have a lot of derelict boats in there that don't really care if they get beat up, and there are only a few spots that are protected, so anyway, I do ask for your consideration, and would appreciate it, and again, thank you so much for all the help you've done for the businesses downtown, thank you.
All right, um, we are going to continue to look at the screen here, we currently have eleven attendees, if there's anybody else who'd like to make a public comment, please hit star nine on your phone, and that will signify you raising your hand intending to speak. All right, at this point, we're not seeing any hands raised, raised along there, anybody wants to hit star nine to be recognized, please, uh, please do so. Please do so. And we're still seeing nobody on the screen desiring to make a public comment.
All right, would anybody else like to be heard? All right, we'll now declare a public comment period closed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number seven on the agenda, this is new business. This item is for action. This particular item is called the Town Common Advisory Task Force. This particular proposal was brought up by two members of the Board of Commissioners. And the goal here was to have a group of folks have the opportunity to help us transition as we go from the conceptual plan into our design and construction. And having some folks across the community to perform that kind of advice and feedback to the group, both here in the Phase 1, as we work in the current Phase 1, and potentially future phases, because we know that some ideas in the conceptual plan wouldn't be available until Phase 2. As of the last session, there was a proposed slate of candidates for this. And the slate of candidates for the Advisory Task Force, it's a time-limited group, but nonetheless, they would need to be identified. The Commissioners' man and Borland would serve as Board of Commissioners representatives. And then, community members would be Sarah Benson, Malcolm Fearing, BB Woody, Sherri Wickstrom, and Dave Stimple. And I'd also, I'd go ahead, I'm not to be appointed to the Advisory Task Force, but for the record, I'd be serving as staff liaison between the task force and the team of engineers, landscape architects, surveyors that are already working on this project.
Anybody have any comments or suggestions? I had suggested Jason and Eddie, because as a Commissioner representative, and then we need a few more. We just don't need to let a guy a hand like a real absorbent amount of people that's involved. And I think the ones you've named is a broad representative of all of Mania. And you do have the Chairman of the Planning Board on there, too. So you've been pretty inclusive. And I might add, I had nothing to do with picking any of these names. But I understand that your Todd Water, I mean, Todd Water, Almoss, they're already working on the project, and this is part of the scheme of the thing, so we can keep on moving on.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that's absolutely true. They're already working.
The Advisory Committee will be under you or with you will be running the show. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Yep. Comment?
Can you list those names again, of all the community members?
Yes, sir. The names of the five community members are Sarah Benson, Malcolm Fearing, BB Woody, Sherri Wickstrom, and Dave Stimple.
James, this is Christine Walker. So as Advisory Committee, I mean, I take it it's just for advice only, it's nothing that, you know, it's not binding the town, any changes are, I mean, those will still be brought to us? Or, I mean, how often are they meeting? That kind of thing?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. Yes, this group, it is time-limited. What we do believe is that early on, so in about a week and a half, there would be an initial meeting with this group, with engineers and the landscape architect. And what we would do is go ahead and look at the program. But the bulk of the program, in terms of the civil engineering side is set. I mean, we know how many spaces we have to have, we know the configuration of that. But there are some open questions, there were some open questions, even following the charrette and all the public input. So there were various options open, for example, you know, kiosks, for example, or do we do a statue, or do we do a rock with some plaque and interpretive signage, or additional landscaping? So some of those specific areas, particularly related to site features and landscaping, do require input. And honestly, there may be some opportunities for naming opportunities. So whether it be fundraising, or corporate, or we actually reached out to another organization in terms of a potential statue. So we see this group as being able to provide feedback and guidance, but also, they may have ideas for how do we accomplish some of those things that were on the wish list as opposed to the base scope of work. So hopefully, we'll see that kind of idea generation and feedback from this group.
But no changes otherwise to the plans that we have in place unless they're brought forward to us? Or, I mean, we're just going to be updated on what they're deciding or talking about?
Yes, Commissioner, it's an advisory body. So for example, much of the program is set, so for example, it wouldn't deviate from what parking needs to be provided, or the big park space we've got, but kind of talking about material selection and alternatives with those features. There's an advisory body, it's not a voting body, it's a recommending body. If that makes sense.
Okay. Yes. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Commissioner Collins, do you have a motion to go ahead and appoint those people to the?
Betty was about to say something, I know you can't see.
What I was going to say, these were appointed, or was the application made? I know we approved them.
Oh, Mayor Potem, this group hasn't been approved. So this was just a task force. So it was, the task force or the Advisory Committee was suggested by two of the Board members at a prior meeting, and these names have been submitted by members of the Board. But unlike a long-term committee, like, for example, the, whether it be Special Events Committee, or whether it be a park, or those, those are long-term, and those have to go per our charter. We do a recruitment process, a review by the Board, and a selection process. Because this is a task force, though, I know the mayor had conferred with the expert, Norman Houston, in terms of, where it's like one of those blue-ribbon task forces, they can just appoint out of folks who have either expressed interest or have been suggested by Board members. But it has to be time-limited for us to be in tune with our charter.
Okay. Which is fine, you know, I think it's a good slate, but my concern is, is that I'm not going to sit up here as a black woman and continue to approve appointments, recommendations to boards, unless it gets more inclusive, more diverse. And that's what I believed in, and that's part of me running. And I'm not going to do it. We got to reach out to the community and involve everybody. I know the mayor agrees with me, and you do, too. But we got to be more inclusive. And we just got to be more inclusive, because sending messages to our children only certain group of people, ethics, can run Mania. And that's not true. That is not true. So we need to branch out, and again, I've submitted some applications for people, for Boards, and we still have not heard from that. And I think it's been quite a while, and we need to do something about it. I'm not going to sit here as a black woman and allow it to continue to happen. I don't know what happened to Pat, but that, no, absolutely not. So this appointment is good for, good, but we need to branch out. And we talked about it, Commissioner Mann, and we want to do that, but I will not allow that to happen.
Let me suggest that this committee, this Advisory Committee, will eventually go away. It's not a permanent standing committee. It's more of a type group of representative of Mania, which, Betty, I agree what you're saying, and probably should have been. But it's more of an advisory group to keep engineering firm, and everybody's on schedule, and everybody going in the right direction, and everybody, so that everybody won't have to scatter. It's more of a type of directional type group that'll keep it on target, keep it moving, and keep up with the suggestions. I don't, if anything important has to come, it'll come before this Commission. We will finally approve everything, or disapprove it. But we got to have some type of guidance to keep it together, unless we're just going to leave it to the town manager, and that suits me. The town manager will take care of everything. But this is how you get community involvement. It's what I was, I was just thinking about. You know, this is not a complacent, complete board. There's differences of opinion and going different directions, and we cannot continue that. We got to have a sense of direction where we're going every time, regardless if it's right or wrong.
Mr. Commissioner Collins, could we add two more names, two African-American names to this task force? Clarence Lewis, and Jenny Owens, and possibly Frank Hester? Hello? Hello?
I suggest that, I mean, and branch out. I know those three suggestions are very good. I think we need to reach out to some younger people. Clarence, he's good, he's on a board that you basically live in charge of, and Frank Hester, too, the Collins Society. So we need to bring in some new people, period. And I'm not just talking about black, African-American, I'm talking about Hispanic, I'm talking about people in Pirates Cove. So I would agree with leaving the slate like it's presented originally for now. Like the mayor and the town manager said, it's a specific time on this, it's not a long-term one.
What's the most efficient way to add to this list, but giving it, like Betty said, a little more consideration beyond tonight? That having, putting it to you, or putting it to the Board to add those additional members, or, I mean, putting it to the task force to add those members, or doing it at the next workshop? You hate everything to take to the next, you know, month down the road to go.
I'd say leave it like it was presented. I mean, nobody, unless Darryl has in the last five minutes, talk to these people. So the slate that was presented, which is Sarah Benson, Malcolm Fearing, Sherri Wickstrom, BB Woody, David Stimple, I think that should go forward with this project. We got to get the Town Commons moving.
Can we empower them, though, to add a couple members to their ranks?
I'd say no, because you're doing it because I mentioned it. And we don't know what their expertise is. I'd say leave the slate like it is, you know, as is.
Don't look at me, I'm not getting into this.
No.
I have one suggestion, if it's going to be this complicated, and I knew it would be, is leave it all up to the town manager, as usual, and let him run the show.
No, I don't think it should be left up to the town manager. I think we should go with what the slate is that was presented right now, the number. Do we need to make a motion? A motion that the slate that was presented for the task force, Sarah Benson, Malcolm Fearing, Sherri Wickstrom, BB Woody, Dave Stimple, I make a motion, maybe accept it, whatever, to the task force for the Town Commons.
All right, is the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Two seconds. A second by Eddie Mann, his motion, a second to continue with the advisory group as suggested by the town manager. All in favor? Go ahead, poll.
Thank you, sir. We'll go by roll call for the listening audience. We'll start with Mayor Potem Selby, Iron A. Commissioner Mann, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, Iron A.
Nay.
Commissioner Burke, Iron A. We'll ask again for Commissioner Burke. We're checking the screen to make sure your audio connection is still live.
Aye. Hello?
Thank you, Burke. And next up, Commissioner Collins, Iron A.
Aye.
And Commissioner Walker, Iron A.
Aye.
Okay, so we, I'm going to refer to the town clerk. I believe we have two nays and four ayes. So the motion carries.
All right, motion carries. Adoption approved.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next up on the agenda, item eight, this is old business, and this is for action. The title of this is Discussion and Consideration of Text Amendment in Section 12-7 Boat Lifts. We also have a town planner available, should the Board have questions. But he has appeared before you, and also the Planning and Zoning Board. This proposed text amendment has gone through all the proper channels, notices, and public hearings. As a follow-up to the last public hearing, where state law requires an additional 24 hours, all the materials have been provided to, have been provided to the Board in terms of the public hearing and the additional 24-hour period. At this point, it's up to the Board to move forward with this particular zoning text amendment.
I think it may be appropriate for me to comment here. Eddie Mann, if I understand correctly, with the town attorney, that any changes to this item would need to be referred back to the Planning Board and then have another public comment?
If there are substantive changes, that's typically the least risky way that is presented through the process.
Okay. So to, I guess, fail any confusion, confusion, sorry, with what the intent was, I think it may be appropriate to spin this back to the Planning Board, but with the modification that, I'm sorry, I'm trying to look at my notes here, but modification that the boat lifts not be allowed in the historic waterfront district as it's defined in the zoning ordinances, but that it be lifted for marinas. That way, nobody, clear that there's not going to be boat lifts on the town docks. It'd be referred back to the Board for their adjustments and suggestions that they have to lift the amendment in marinas, but not the historic Mania waterfront district.
I agree with that sentiment. I think that, you know, we've got a few different things going on with this. And, you know, first of all, the land use is 13 years old, I believe, and it's going to be updated with a comprehensive plan that has to legally be done by this time, two years from now. So it's overdue to get updated, and it will see the attention that it should have got previously. I believe Melissa had told me when I asked about it, was it suggested that it's updated every five to 10? But anyway, so we're overdue there. But we've got some inconsistency, some clarity that I think needs to be made, you know, in the, in this section of the ordinance. You've got it broken up into the three sections of town, with one being the historic downtown. You've got then Shallow Bag Bay South, which covers what we're talking about here, Marsh's Light, Shallow Bag Bay, I mean, yeah. And then you've got Pirates Cove. And we're talking about marinas, we're not talking about anything private. And I feel like most of the support that I've seen and heard has been that we should allow these marinas to make their own choice here, but there's some areas we want to protect. And I think, so that a lot of the voices opposing are issues that could be addressed in some additional language, rather than just pulling this out, whether it's the size of the boats that can go on, the size of the lift, or anything else there. And also, there's a lot of fear that now downtown historic area is going to fill up with boat lifts. And the fact of the matter is, the area that talks about downtown, that historic downtown, doesn't address boat lifts. So if we wanted to put in boat lifts right now, we could. It's up to us. So I think, like Eddie said, there's an opportunity for us to tighten that up as well. And I think in sending sending this back with, you know, not to just review it and decide whether it's a good idea or not, but to send it back with the intent to allow boat lifts under, you know, some, some protected conditions and also remove them from, or add some language that restricts them in the historic area. I think that accomplishes what, you know, what we should be doing. You know, we don't want to, there's a lot of good intentions that sometimes we.
What was, what was leaving the planning board on that?
From what I understand is it was, they didn't believe it to be consistent with their, that the space should be designed to maintain the town's natural edge, protect fragile areas, preserve the use of public stuff. And I, I think that can be interpreted in, in my opinion, in a plethora of different ways. You know, to me, a structure could be, could be a dock itself, or it could be a riprap jetty, or a bulkhead, or a boathouse. A structure could be a waterfront house. So you can interpret that. The planning board could deny, you can even have a hundred yards in the water. And we don't have to be that strict about it. Hopefully they'll, they'll address that.
I think one of the other things, sorry, I forgot to mention was, you know, Todd alluded to this when he was speaking today, and those docks are empty for a reason. And we can't just, you know, not give people options to fix that situation. And I know there's been wave attenuators proposed in the past. And, you know, my first initial reaction was, okay, well, maybe that's, that's the solution to do. I'm sure that was, you know, 20 years ago, whatever it was proposed. And, you know, really, that was, that was shot down just a couple of years ago. And this, we've got to allow people to do something with those empty, empty docks. I think this would help. And I think it'd help in those other properties that could be impacted as well.
The reason I ask that, Commissioner Mann, is I read the document why the planning board sent it back. Wanted it read in public. Are we confident that the planning board will act on it and make a decision or send it back again?
I, I hope with better direction that they will maybe make a more informed decision this time around is my, my hope. You know, I think, kind of address the elephant in the room. There's a lot of, anytime we see an empty lot, or an empty boat slip, or an empty business, that's a burden that we all share as taxpayers to, to, the burden of that cost. We're all paying for every opportunity in the world. Things filling these spaces and they're all kind of lightening the load for all of us in ways of shared revenues and services. So I think we need to figure out a way to, to invite people to, to fill those empty spaces in responsible ways instead of just telling people no. I don't think, I don't think we should be the town of no. We should be, how can we make things work for the betterment of everybody?
I agree.
This is Commissioner Collins. This, this was a clarification. This, this amendment would have allowed boat lifts everywhere in the town. Is that right?
Commissioner, this, this, this would have lifted the prohibition against boat lifts in marinas. So boat lifts are allowed in other places in town, but this was specifically aimed at marinas.
And it's at marinas in that particular area, which doesn't address historic side or Pirates Cove. It's just shallow Bag Bay Club and, and Marshes Light and anything that, you know, if a marina popped up overnight in between.
Am I, am I not wrong, Eddie? Don't they have boat lifts at Pirates Cove Marina? I think I've seen two or three down here on the, on the inside canal. I believe I have.
I believe I have.
Unless I'm wrong. I mean, they're already there. Something happened way back when to the law, because we're dealing with a law that's 20 years old. Not 13, but 20 years old.
And you can.
I'm not, I'm not getting in the argument. I'm saying, what I'm saying is Pirates Cove's already got, how did they get there?
And I, just to, you know, to play devil's advocate here, the, the way that the town defines a boat lift, any device attached to ponds or docks that suspends a boat over the water, technically, we, the town actually has some of those. By letter of the word boat lift, we've got those little sailboats for the sailing class right now on suspensions over the water. So it's.
In effect, all those docks would be this, because they're free floating.
Correct.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I can confirm. The town planner is, is noting here that there are two or three, there are two or three in the marina at Pirates Cove, and there are also lifts behind homes. So you're correct. It's confirmed.
And to the, to the private ones behind homes, this doesn't mention anything about that. So that is, you know, separate issue. And then in terms of at the marina, this, I believe, this doesn't show the, the three sections on the, what we've got for the amendment. But I believe, and Melissa or James can correct me if I'm wrong, but the third section is Pirates Cove, which doesn't address boat lifts. So whatever public perception is, there's nothing to say that they can't have boat lifts.
The homeowners association at Marshes Light, what's that feel from there? Who are talking there, there in favor of the boat lift?
Mayor Protem, so we had some, we did have some feedback from residents, some, some folks who have interest in Marshes Light, but I don't believe the homeowners association as a body made a public comment. However, I will say that we did see in their, their conditions, covenants, restrictions, their homeowners association rule, that they have to approve any boat lifts as part, as part of their own internal review process beyond the one that's already out there that was pre-existing. So it appears that these kind of decisions from an aesthetic standpoint would be made by the respective homeowners associations.
Thank you.
Well, once the board, we got to move on.
Should I make that a motion for him? I'd like to move to refer to the planning board of a proposed zoning text amendment prohibiting boat lifts on property owned by the town of Manio in the historic district, but to approve boat lifts in marinas in the other districts. Is that?
May I, may I interject a point of order, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner. And please forgive me. In turn, and I'm looking toward the town attorney, but I believe, if you don't, if, if you're wanting to go ahead and approve the current text amendment while simultaneously referring the prohibition on town property, I would, it would be helpful if your motion also said that you would approve the zoning text amendment as presented, because that statement includes both the motion and the consistency statement that's in the, the report here or in the proposed ordinance here.
Okay. I'll strike my motion. I'd like to move that we approve the zoning text amendment as presented and to refer the planning and zoning board a proposed zoning text amendment prohibiting boat lifts on property owned by the town of Manio and historic district waterfront as defined, section 12-7A1 of the zoning ordinance.
All right, the motion has been made by Eddie. I'm not about to repeat it unless the town manager wants to repeat it. Is there a second?
A second.
I need to get it repeated. It excludes the waterfront, right?
It would, so now there's technically no protection on the waterfront, as the way I understand it. This would allow boat lifts in the marinas and then refer to the board, the planning board to make some type of protection on the historic waterfront district.
I'd like to actually amend that to just add that the board take into, the planning zoning board take into consideration some restricted language as they, into the second section there, and take into consideration, you know, things like removing during a storm, during a named storm, or the size of the boat lift. I know I just made that motion much longer. I don't know if that technically needs to be added to it or just said, but I wanted to.
That's what I'm going to ask Ben. There's a motion on the floor, Ben. And that has to be dispensed with, I think, doesn't it?
It can be amended. It can be amended by motion or it could be amended.
We could, if Eddie accepts his amendment, that's proper.
Right. If Eddie accepts his amendment, and I can't remember who seconded, but the person who seconded, re-seconds on that, that's fine. Or if Borland actually made a motion to amend and then got a second, you would go and deal with that amendment and then kind of rewind back to the broader motion.
Get back to the motion.
That's the two ways to do it.
Probably will be complicated.
It wouldn't be something, just do it. If Eddie, Eddie would have accept the amendment.
Sorry, I'll accept Commissioner Borland's amendment to the common.
All right, we have amended motion as to, are you going to be saying to be confused?
No, I'm looking, I'm, I'm looking, because there's an amended, there's an amended motion, but we need the second.
Did I second or did Betty second originally?
No, no, I, I think you were going to second it, but you said you wanted to amend the motion. So can you, Commissioner Mann's accepted the amended motion.
Can I second again?
There you go. One thing I do know, I do a little bit about decorum, Robert rules. I was looking for Ben for counsel. But all right, I think we're square. I can't repeat the amendment or the motion, so you'll have to do it, James. It's too complicated.
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor. So I'll go ahead and summarize and the, it's making a motion. A second, please, correct me if I'm wrong. But motion is in parts with a modification. I moved to, the motion is to approve the zoning text amendment as presented and to, a motion to refer to the planning and zoning board, proposed zoning text amendment prohibiting boat lifts on property owned by the town of Manio on the historic Manio waterfront as defined in section 12-7A1 of the zoning ordinance, and for the planning and zoning board to take into consideration restrictive language on items such as removal of boats during named storms and length of boat.
All right.
This is, this is Commissioner Collins. So with this motion, we are approving the zoning text amendment, right?
Yes, yes, Commissioner, that first.
Before it goes back to the, to the planning and zoning board?
Yes, and it would, yes, Commissioner, it would refer the second, the new thing in planning and zoning board. And that's appropriate because the first order of exception amendment was deemed for approval in section 12-7A2. And then the referral to the, to the planning and zoning board is related to 12-7A1. So it's absolutely appropriate for those two items to be split as, as suggested.
All right, enough time on this one. Take a poll.
Thank you, thank you, sir. We'll go ahead with a roll call vote. We'll start with Mayor Protem Selby.
Aye.
We'll go to Commissioner Mann, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Burke, Iron A.
Nay.
Commissioner, Commissioner Collins, Iron A.
Nay.
And Commissioner Walker, Iron A.
Nay.
So right, Mr. Mayor, right now we, there's a split vote. This is, this is presented. So in this particular case, we would cast the tiebreaker.
I vote aye.
Imagine that.
Mr. Mayor, the, the motion carries by a count of four, of four to three. All right. And next up, next up on the agenda, Mr. Mayor, item nine. Mayor, your comments. This is for information.
All right. I don't have any comments because of the protocol. We'll go through the.
I don't have any comments either, Mr. Mayor.
Eddie?
I just want to say that our website looks very good, the live streaming, the live campus. Again, thank you Carl, Michelle and town manager Ferris. These partitions, they look good. These glass partitions, they look good. Thank you manager Ed on that too. Back to the website. It's very Pacific. I like that. And as I said in my earlier comments that we need to reach out to different boards, not people who, who's already on board and not people related to people, but we need to stay tight on that.
Christine?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Jane, can I ask where we are with the cemetery iron work? The continuation of that? I know we were working, you know, on some measurements and all. It's been, it's been a few, if not longer months now on that. And I know that there's money in the budget for that, which is, you know, some, some projects, you know, other than the town commons that we need to get, you know, working on.
Yes, Commissioner Walker. And thank, I'm, I'm looking over the town clerk, because our town, our own town clerk has been, is not only liaison to the cemetery board, but she's actually been working directly with the contractor in question. What was determined when the, as the contractor went out to measure, that the size of the arch needed for the remaining section is different from the one that was provided before. So they have to make a slightly different template, but it will be made in the, in the same style, length as the other. It will have to be made slightly wider. So the town clerk is already working with them on that. And that's in, that's in process so that we can see not only the, the slightly revised design, but also to get an appropriate cost as to that. But again, I, it's absolutely in the, by the, the new fiscal year, but it, it just carried forward from the prior year.
Okay. All right. Well, thanks so much.
Jason?
Yeah, just going back to the website, I think, you know, in relation with the business association and helping to stand that up, I think that they'll feed into each other. And that's something that businesses can get excited about and drive more people participation into the business association where we've got a more stable situation to hand off things to. And I was also thinking about the business association, the website, and, you know, filling up those shops. And I think hopefully, you know, as we begin to reopen and fill up those shops, we have an opportunity to figure out how we can have, you know, drive more minority businesses and help cultivate that. I saw the Minority Coalition posted a list of all the, all the businesses in Manio. And, you know, there's, there's a few, but it was like, man, there's, there's not many. So, you know, that's hopefully as we grow, we, something that we can recount. And maybe that's, there's a safety after we have to move away, but it's uncertain.
Okay. Now?
I don't have anything right now.
All right. Eddie, I want to.
I'm good. I'm good. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm fine. Thank you.
No, I was waiting on you. I'm holding off to you to the last. I was seeing if anybody else sitting here.
Okay. Thank you.
Richie, you got any comments?
I'm good, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Anything to come up for the board? If I'm coming forward, we'll meet once a day.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The, if you choose a recess, the next meeting will be July 15th at 5:00.
We're having a workshop at July 15th at 4:00.
5:00, sir.
5:00, okay.
I'm moving recess until July 15th at 5:00.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second. This is Christine Walker.
Yeah. You got the poll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Protem Selby, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Burke, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, Iron A.
Aye.
And Commissioner Walker, Iron A.
Aye.
Right, Mr. Mayor, you have a unanimous vote for the recess.